In public discussion. Still the mess, please, Billy.
Getting over her small jobs, or?
No.
I kinda spread out this morning.
Yeah, it bothered me.
Does that bother you?
No.
Sweet and Scott, Kyle's.
Start showering, that's still very good.
Nope, we kinda like him not to get up.
When I'm having a sit back, doing back for about this...
Know what?
He told us if we'd start taking showers, he'd start setting up here again.
Oh!
I think that was clear towards me, but, you know?
I thought, I thought it said it's showering outside.
I was, I was all in his feet, though. I mean, that was impossible.
I don't have a shower, I have bathtub, I took it down there. Although it was cold, the walls would get some cool.
I was teaching your nephew how to skip. That was hilarious.
My nephew?
My great nephew.
How does it go?
It was, it was pretty funny.
He was pretty sad yesterday, he spent the night at my parents' house. And then had to go home early, and then he wanted to, and my mom was starting to get sick. My two nieces had type A. And they were at the house, so I think my mom must've caught a little bit of something from somewhere. She was turning around temperature, she was sad, and he was sad. He'd cry, but, you know how he does, when he gets sad, he gets real quiet. And plus, everybody gets kinda cuddly then.
Yeah, yeah.
You play trouble with him? Have you ever played that? You love popping the dice.
I wanna go by dollar bills.
Unfortunately, he's in that first house. He'd sit at the table.
I've been downstairs.
He'd sit at the table, just play by himself for an hour, popping the dice counting.
Well, I like trouble, because they can't lose a dice.
They can just lose all the other pieces.
Hey, Sarah, is that noise coming from downstairs?
I couldn't tell where it was from.
You're having a problem?
Uh, well, they're painting in the jail, so maybe...
That's what it is.
They are painting. They got ladders in there, and they're painting.
So how many inmates do we have, high from the paint, low from the paint?
I don't know.
Who is painting?
Uh, I'm not even sure who they've got painting, we've got like five down there. But I know that two of them went to prison today, so... They left their rest room.
Going home?
Probably not.
They graduated.
They graduated, yeah. Graduated, moved on.
They moved on to greener pastures?
What about that?
Yeah, about greener pasture, but...
I'm sure it's not Bonnie painting, too.
No. No, it's, it's, I don't even know.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi.
How are you?
Well, I'm so warm.
Move, get the wind.
Second. All favor. Aye.
You guys saw everything signed?
Yes, favor, board, yeah.
About to break in. About time to break in.
I made motions to approve.
I feel like that all week.
Okay, all right. Jakey. You're here for the resolution, right, Coleman? Okay, we're gonna go down to resolutions, break down a sales tax. Health, fifty percent of the two percent sales tax for EMS fire departments, nine one one. You all right? Lucky you've got, you've got the crap on your head.
I'm just one, I'm just listening.
You want me to read it?
No.
Or do you want me to write that?
Whatever you all need to do, I'm just here, so I know what's going on.
What we've done, we've... Well, the fifty-two percent that ambulances get now, for EMS, which is ambulance people, we took twenty percent for the enhanced nine one one. They agreed to it and everything else to help us get us, keep going. Didn't have a copy of it, so I signed it. And they all agreed to it, so we're lucky. Just got told to spend the money wisely, whatever he wants. Sorry. I make a most approved. All in favor? Aye.
So ambulance service get twenty percent, I mean, uh...
Nine one one.
Nine one one get twenty percent?
What do ambulance have?
The fire departments will say the same. Okay. Fire departments say the same.
Of the ambulance's percentage?
Yeah.
Of the fifty-two percent?
Of the sex health percentage, not ambulance percentage.
Yeah, yeah.
You can read it.
So reduces ambulance to thirty-two?
Thirty.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, yeah.
Well, hopefully that helps.
Okay, I heard.
Yes, definitely. But definitely can hurt.
We're gonna copy.
Yeah. Yeah, this one.
Yeah. Do you want a copy?
Yeah, I'll get one whenever, I'm gonna write this second.
We got a copy machine.
Now we're up to Ebono, Ebono worship.
Is that all we were doing for nine one one?
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome.
Something else, did you?
What's your last name, Sarah?
I'm Sarah Wyver.
We need a copy of that.
Darn.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, you're welcome, Coleman.
Sarah, next week we'll create the sales checks. Okay.
We'll do account, we'll do account.
Yeah.
And we'll have to go to the board, and then...
Right.
That will start, of course, you won't have money in there for two months.
Right.
Because it would take in two months for it to be appropriated, and...
Right.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome. Maybe you needed that for Jay, didn't we, termicidal?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
What? I thought it sounded pretty good.
Pick on Jay's day.
Don't worry, he'll give me back.
I don't think it's pick on Jay's day, I think it's pick on Jay year.
It's almost over, the year is almost over today, be happy.
Thank God.
Of course, I don't know what year they're, you know...
Yeah.
Knowing calendar and all.
I'm gonna go from you to pick on Jay year to years. My parents got a date in a little, one of those, like a truck has a wrench, you could take it completely apart and put it back together.
Cool, I bet he loves that.
Yeah, he played with it, and we put brand new batteries in. Yes, or, would've been Christmas Day, but he got it. And by yesterday, the batteries were pretty much dead. Of course, it didn't help the kids that was walking around, just...
It don't take very long for the batteries...
But she wanted to play with it more than, and he didn't want her touching it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Like I tried to saw, so I didn't get a hold of her, I said, "Now you can build your wife a deck," and she kind of gave me a look. I said, "Well, I hope you do it, just not when it's..."
Not when it's six degrees.
You see Manny Camel's deal? Well, I guess her and Jared, they was, they, Logan said, Mom, Dad, they wanted motorized Jeeps and whatever. Never, never got them.
The grandkids did.
Logan and Jared got it, though, for her daughter. Oh, yeah, they was having a lot, quite a little fun.
That's funny.
Uncles did it. I'm saying, "Oh, yeah, probably..."
You know, my nieces, a couple little drones that fly. And of course, my brother had to figure out, if he could figure out how to fly them, to teach them how to fly it, so I'm like, "I know they're gonna enjoy this more."
Yeah. Just something lasts long enough for them to get to fly them.
When I ordered them, it said kid drones. I was like, "Oh, this one's gonna be easy to fly, it's for the kids." Box came, and it said for fourteen and older. When I saw it, I was saying that kids.
Yeah.
Fourteen and older.
It said kid.
He was still a kid.
Yeah.
That's what his brother thought, "Woo-hoo, very nice to me."
It's only crashes one, he's got two of them. If it's real good, you can run above all the same.
Those one go, they both go off the same?
I could grab the cement was for them. Well, they came with our controllers, but they're the exact same thing.
Like something, they build bricks.
Yeah. They don't have anything change the channel on it. And they got, they got helicopter, and what you're saying, or from the other side. Their house is gonna be going crazy.
They're not liked in the cold weather, then, they can't get outside and play with them?
They're probably flying in the house.
Well, not one dusting house, you can go, they, they can go way up there, and, oh, yeah, you see anything you wanna see.
There's some of them, they don't have much to pay for.
Suppose this was mismarked, but I don't know, I didn't get into it.
I know technically you can't fly those within five miles of an airport without getting permission.
Right.
Is every time anybody's ever flown one in Cherokee's been illegal?
Well, they're right there close.
Yeah, but I don't think it'd be a problem.
I don't think it would be either.
Not till you flew into it.
As long as you're not flying it, I'm not...
Busts your wings, you know.
Yeah.
The wind's gonna get up very high.
We better hope it don't.
We never admit it, we're gonna get up very high.
F A is pretty, uh, strict on their rules for drones.
Yeah, they are. If you wreck a car, wreck a car, by wrecked airplane, you're in trouble.
You might wreck a car by it.
Yeah.
Spot right in the one.
Definitely don't take one out during fires.
Why?
Especially for, if they fall one in the air, and they're having to use helicopters, and they need to fire out, they don't have to ground the air, all the aircrafts.
I don't know about this one here, guys.
Cherokee, have you ever been in a car?
No. Photograph, photograph your sheriff department staff.
That's them on the water, but I don't...
I could've photographed.
And I told them, and I said, you know, I said, "I have all these individuals, I have to set up, I never have to use these."
We should've thought of that.
Can we get a copy of the share from you?
Copy of the what?
Share. You took individual pictures, right?
Mm-hmm.
We need, we need a copy of the...
No, um, it, it was just got stuck.
Oh, okay.
To him, he got it, but...
You need to photo, you need to Photoshop a hat or something on it?
No, we'll put it on the post office.
You need to make a poster out of it, so why did posters?
Put it on the milk carton?
Yeah.
We did that to Rick, his picture was in the paper. And we took the picture off of it, and put water signs at the, for his birthday one year. But we get chewed back when we do things like that, so...
He doesn't know who did it.
Well, that's true.
We blame it on Jay.
Yeah.
I can't even believe that, too.
I don't know why they always...
Especially that photoshopping.
Ever since I was in high school, they always blamed everything on me.
Well, that'd get put up in the mirror.
My house, it was always me and my, me and my brother Tran. My sister and Tran, Brian and Tran, all just Tran.
And I said, "Did you get the whole?"
He was always somehow involved.
You get all of this, and it's always?
The one time he wasn't involved, he, uh, he ran upstairs to tell on me before I could get upstairs to tell him.
To tell him yourself?
Tried killing a wasp with a tennis racket and broke a window.
He was just upset that he didn't think of it.
He probably thought we would try to blame it on him somehow. He let the wasp inside. He gave me the tennis racket.
And taught him to swing.
I have two older brothers. They liked me a fuck out of once.
You have two older brothers?
Mm-hmm.
Glad you shot me.
I got, shot a couple times with a BB gun.
Loves me like a brother. Four, four boys in your family?
Three.
Three?
And you have a sister.
I don't know which one to feel sorry for.
I'm sorry for the boy that didn't even met my sister. She's feisty.
She'd have to be.
My sister finally apologized to me after fifty years.
What's she want?
I don't know, she, she, we could be in a room playing, and all she'd have to do is let out a yell, and my dad would come in and beat her up.
Oh, yeah, quite proficiently, that's why.
That was mine, too.
And she finally, after fifty years, she said, "I'm sorry for getting you beat, to me."
Well, I got a few years before I have to apologize.
My sister could, uh, be beating you with a baseball bat.
I think I yelled at her.
You look at her, and then you're the one that's gonna get beaten and in trouble.
My mother would yell to the end, "Leave her alone!"
I always told my parents that my sister was a trouble. She would get stuff, like, like her first sofa, there was always the rule that you had to be sixteen and driving before you got your sofa. Well, I was sixteen, and both the boys were sixteen. And my sister got hers because when she was in, first started high school, she couldn't drive and needed a phone to call for a ride. I was like, "Oh, so you mean the exact same thing I did?" But I didn't get a phone for it?
All right, Jessica.
No, you deserve her fair.
It used to be, you had to be at Turner High before they, we'd start showing animals, my sister started earlier than that.
Well, they just supposed to, generally.
Well, they adopted her, too, so that kinda... They couldn't have another more perfect child after me, so they had to go out and find one.
Find one?
Did I understand, did I understand what he just said?
You better get the monkey boots out, so you can do it.
Did you get that on the recording?
Yeah.
It's recording.
That's not good.
I told her, I'm not saying stuff, so, that's the first time I heard it. It's the reason my brothers think I'm the fourth one, I don't know.
Family dynamics go back and forth.
I just don't have kids, so, their own money mom spends on them goes to their kids, I mean, she spends on me, it just goes to me, but...
Jack just spends money on me?
Sometimes.
Is that Jack just spends money on me?
It's one of them guys.
I had two older sisters, I was dressed up like everything's tough for a while.
That's the suit that that's gone on.
Yeah, but you shouldn't wear those clothes anymore.
I know, I know.
Be careful, be good on that.
Right, my two brothers are three and a half years apart. So it's like, I was the... Yeah, and so it's like, they were always, you know, close in age enough that they were together for everything, and then I'm, what, four years younger than my older brother? And my sister's three years younger than I am. It was rough.
It was rough.
Of course, at that age, you start to try to fit in with them, so they, you have to be the guinea pig on everything.
Sarah was around Asian, he knew so much, he would tell everybody he had two sisters, and so I'd tell him, "No, you jinxed yourself, you got two sisters."
Sure did.
I wondered, I always wondered how Dawn survived. I mean, it's kids. That's why they needed the two boys. Three girls and Katrina, man, that'd be...
That was a good thing I was good to model, brother, because he sure got big.
Yeah, you were right.
You don't give him plenty of rest, though, brother.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Blank, first, so this, number three, is it? Month? Month, five.
Is the sheriff not practicing?
Sheriff, is there anything else?
Both of my sheriff. Both of my sheriff.
Good.
It's may so next week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Second. Oh, who did it, okay. All favor, aye? Throw across it, we got three.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, I reject that, really crossing, do you? Tucker, we got him again.
Twenty-five, twelve. Power line, or power line, Midstates or Charlie? I'm reading a water tire here.
Yeah, they're laying a fiber optic, they did.
Well, it should... Should be District, it's District, District One. No charge, though, is it? Land fiber optic, too?
Yeah, they got, I don't know, maybe a spark in here, that wall, came that cable going in there, so...
Don't cut that. Don't cut that fiber optic, they get pretty mad to do that.
I don't know what happened.
They get to, they just say they're built.
Well, they built.
Well, yeah, for like seventeen hundred or ten, probably, now by ten dollars. When Daddy Guppy possibly fired you, you got two.
Yeah, Daddy's, they're laying the two, two house from ladder to roof.
Where's he going, one sec?
Uh, he's at the barn, and, uh, not quite half south.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Aye.
Cross it.
All in favor?
In fact, Jimmy says he's paying for the house.
Jimmy's paying for it?
Who's?
I don't know how you can afford that, like, get and grow up. But I'm coming back after my pile. Part of it might be gone.
You need it, well, we got plenty over there, we're gonna square that after that. No problem.
Are you ready?
Do we wanna do these, or just go ahead and do them last?
What, and then, what is it?
Let's let them last. How about the August detention transportation claim?
Which is a spot, like, that says, District Supervising, creative assignment, so we...
Oh, boy.
Look, that's what Megan come down and asked me about, was where our contract was for juvenile. I went, "Well, we've never done one in the six years that I've been here."
I don't remember either.
And she says, "Oh, well, I think we need to do one," and I went, "Okay."
So this is what it is?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
That's what she came down to the office to talk to me about.
This is just...
So she was gonna check on us some more, and she said that Wesley didn't like doing juveniles, so she said, "We probably haven't that much," so... She was gonna do some more checking on, get back with me.
Go ahead, ask. Excuse me. All it gives is their juveniles initials. Pretty, pretty sorry, I would say, probably the name.
I'm pretty strict about those, like, I think.
Oh, yeah. Make a most approved?
Aye.
All in favor? Midstates? Yeah, control, yeah.
Two, I feel signed and copyable.
Sort of poured a coffee on it, didn't it?
I, I came to my office that way, I told myself it was copy.
It was in there, he dropped it all over.
I told myself it was copy, I hope that's what it was.
Yeah. Well, it wants a signature, right?
Yeah.
I think I've seen some of this before, Al.
Yep.
It's ain't the same well, is it?
Same cup.
Same cup, yeah.
Yeah.
You do all, you do the old tax deal, don't you?
Yeah.
Our old manager won't get much money off of it.
You're gonna get a resent, you pay interest rate.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Zero point four zeros and six twenty, sixty-two twenty-one, yeah, quite low, yeah.
About two hundred years, you might be able to afford a cup of coffee.
Another cup of coffee.
Yeah. Township twenty-four, range twelve, section ten.
You don't want some...
Yes. I make a most approved.
Aye.
All in favor?
This is just if you go to, wanna send anything to that auction, please, right now.
Yeah, we better do.
That's it.
We just sign the front page, don't we? If I remember right. Yep. I know one thing, I'm sure blood ain't working on the bridge, it's a jet right now. That'd be one cold place, wouldn't it? I make a most approved.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we need to sign here, and then I'll just state that you guys will sign down there.
You guys, now, they got problems.
Again, she's surgery on her foot, she's here today.
Right, you're right.
Yeah. Get it signed down there below the date, for all three of us.
Secretly donation to Teddy Cox to dial Williams, do you think I can?
I'll make a motion to drag it.
Stand and J. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we go back to open acceptance, right? False, four, six, one, hold.
Get my pocket knife out. Here, I'll take the big ones.
Okay.
I'll help you with some of the smaller ones, Jerry, if you want. I just got the biggest knife.
Then, just the thing or something back there?
Boy, got that on film, oh, boy. That was a threat, that's what I thought.
So what do I can get it open? Now what do we do, show you who it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have out of concrete.
Curfew smell.
Get in the page. See around there, some.
Second page, another right.
Oh, here it is. At eight.
It's a ginger.
Yeah, that's what it is, I had to get it off of here. Sure wasn't right.
Make sure on that second page, their note arrives also, we have to keep them out.
Yeah, okay, we keep them with them.
Yeah, this is our rise too. I feel like it's redating, you see after I put that along enough.
I'm sorry, did you say yours was?
Al, Al concrete, yeah, I haven't done one. Yellow house.
You had gifted.
Ergon, that's all.
New yellow houses was, so yeah, whatever you need. These are, alright, plug them all.
Come back in the yellow.
Martin Marietta.
One of them, that, um, Highway Bridge.
Bridging Highway.
Bridging Highway. They had a bid, and the company, they sent an email back that said that they would not bid on it, so I printed that out, stuck it in there.
But where it at, Al? Bridging Highway's where they're at.
I think that's who it was. Yeah, Bridging Highway material. We're in Creek County, it actually came from the county clerk's office, and it. Senator, I received a call from the daughter of the Bridging Highway Materials Company today stating that she would like to have the company remove from all county bid list, the owner has passed away, and she said they are receiving so many bids there are not in the business anymore, who are losing them from the list, it would be appreciated, so I didn't even mail it to them.
Really, the owner died, so that's his debt, eh?
Here, I got one from Belicee, I got one from, uh, Kusko.
Hostings.
Hostings. And I got Sunbelt, but he didn't. Circle S painting.
K and O.
Railroad yard. Guy didn't get open during Christmas, but.
Railroad yard?
Yeah.
What you saying, railroad yard is? Now.
Logan County asshole.
C E D seven, county of energy district authority, Clint. Took me a while, I was like, what the heck? It's, okay.
They called like three times, and I'm like, well, you will, you want to, or should we receive them any other time?
Yeah.
And they called back, forgot it.
Good.
Good, I followed me.
Little male, you know, you never know. Shouldn't take too long to get down there. Clint.
Oh, you got some more? Want me to help?
Okay. Let's see, how you have that nifty knife, I mean, it's getting letterer, they're all ready to go there. Yeah.
I cut the bids in T.
You gotta work, yeah, you know.
I mean, either the price or not, right?
Good job.
Be alright.
Yeah, I cut the price.
I'm sure they'll go for that. Concrete.
What was your last one?
Jack.
That's going to you.
Deb Ross.
Deb Ross. He is old.
Al concrete, when they did Burlington's building, they used the six month bid, but he had the old one, but it was lower than this one, and we kept trying to tell him, you have the wrong bid, and he's like, no, I don't, so I went, so we notated it on the P O, so if they come back and realize that it was lower than this past six month, and then I kept saying, you're bidding off the wrong one. And I, and I was, tried to be nice, it was lower all along, but I went, you're bidding off the wrong bid sheet, do you want to actually do that? I'm bidding off the six month this year, yeah, but you're bidding off of the six month sheet that's expired.
Right.
Your price is higher.
Be the concrete.
Yeah, in every.
Everybody can do that.
I know.
So.
We just notated it on the P O, that he was bidding off the wrong, so if he comes back and tries to go higher, our P O won't be enough, so.
You got to say, yeah, he's wrong. Okay, if he does.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's lower, so. He would not. Change on, okay, I'm, let's just give him a purchase call.
Well, I don't. Sometimes I wonder what he called in, in concrete places, if guys even know what's going on. I make a motion table to accept all bids.
Accept them.
Until next week, to be awarded next week, right, is that right, yes?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I also almost to accept all, award all bids.
Accept all bids.
I'm be thinking, I can run luck, but I forgot my folder, um, we'll be doing, doing our fair board elections, we'll have that on the agenda for next week, and then we'll start that thing the next week. Um, Troy and I have been talking, so they know who's coming off, but I can run with Brad, if you guys want to know who it is that's coming off. He hasn't told me who for sure doesn't want back on, but he said he has a couple that doesn't want back on, so I'm, and I know they're looking also, but I just wonder.
I got one, don't want back on, right?
I can't remember, I'm sorry, I can't remember who's even coming off. I pulled those, and I, and I talked to Troy again last week, and I went, okay, is next week all right with you guys, and he said, yep, that's what we want to do, so, but I can't remember, I'm sorry, I cannot remember.
Sorry, I, I probably wouldn't be. Let's see, Brian just went on.
Yeah.
And Troy, Brad Bayless, other one.
Yeah.
Or mine.
I think it's Brad's turn, I can't remember the other two.
Brad's turn. You got Tom Chase, District Two, right?
Tom Chase and Nikki and, uh.
The guy at Burlington.
Or he's David Fale.
David Fales.
And then.
You got Allen.
Dave Allen.
Dave Allen.
Doc and Cole.
Tyson, Tyson wants off.
I think, I think it's Brad and Tyson, is what I'm thinking, but do not hold those to them. But I have it laying right in there, I just didn't grab my folder, just won't put that on the agenda.
Brad Tyson. The third one, not fair?
Brad, Tyson, and.
Going, or Allen? No, it's the.
David Allen.
David Allen.
David Allen.
Tyson. Somebody, who's the third one of our cow?
Is David the one married to Leanne?
Did what?
Is David the one married to Leanne?
It's David Fales, who it is.
David Fale.
That's Roger.
No.
Roger's married to Leanne.
Oh, Roger Allen.
Roger's married to Leanne.
Okay. I don't know. But it's, yeah, it's about time for them.
Anyway, if you say, contact you guys. Hope on that filing period, though.
Never count, can't wait to get on this time.
Have to have a lot of lectures.
Hit, we have two that run.
Oh, we have two right.
If, yeah, you gotta do it tomorrow, too.
Is there a?
It's David Fale.
There's gonna be a renewal, I noticed one on here.
Renewal.
Yeah, David Fale.
No, it goes through, um.
It'll go through Tuesday.
Well, District Key, Fale.
That's reasonable, what happened those other days on, I didn't think about the.
It's on the side, are you on the inside of the river?
Cause I heard that too. Yeah, we took care of it.
Oh, the districts are different.
Yeah, David Fale's my district.
David Fales is here.
So it'd be Tom Chase and Nikki and.
Tom Chase and Nikki, being up north, you mean?
Yeah.
No, it's two.
David Fale, Dave Allen, and Doc and Cole.
Okay. Tom Chase and Nikki and Tyson Cole.
No, Doc's up north.
Tom and Nikki.
See, but.
Oh, and the other one is the gal that her husband's calling.
Oh, yeah. Chris Parker.
That's it. That's it, yeah, that's it.
Used to be Chris Buck.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
She just went on.
I was trying to remember, I know it was all sitting there staring at that one day.
Yeah, I think she just, she's been up this.
She just got on.
Yeah, she gifted.
Okay, you want to get that? Do you want to copy that? Or will we change the percentage of the sales tax?
Well, yeah, we do that. We set up the board.
I need my copy away, I'd go to, I'd write one, but she's got one that can be submitted, so.
Probably need a copy of it, too.
Yep.
Yeah.
This way we can file over the.
I don't bet she'd appreciate it, I'd recommend it.
Or I know, but they're not yours.
You have to accept.
Yeah.
The file off, we do.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Then they got recommendations.
Anyway, if you could point it out to her without hurting her feelings, let her, if you want to tell her that she.
Chris Buck, who were missing.
Chris Buck, that's her.
I thought it was. David Fale.
She's sharing the field there. His last coat, almost practically, she behind, he, everyone was paid, and then they drew forward and this, like, things.
Cause what John's coming off.
First one.
Yeah, it's Chris Buck.
I imagine it'd be up north, it'd be. They, or Doc and Cole, they should come off anyway.
Ah, thanks, Tyson, but I got told.
It should be Tyson up there.
I really wasn't worried about it.
It might be David Fale, or Nikki down here. Well, I don't know, might be Tom. I don't know about yours, it's gonna be.
Brad Bayless, I'd say.
Brad, yeah.
Is Nikki and use the other one, Nikki, Tom Chase.
Nikki and Tom Chase and Chris.
It's hard to remember them.
I think it's Tyson. Is it Tyson, Tom, and Brad?
That sounds, that sounds right to me, yeah.
To me, too. It's hard to tell on District Two and One, cause that's how the Chirky's all split up, or you know, who lives where and whatever.
Last time we did that, the third. Through the seventeenth.
January or February?
January.
January.
Already had that in the.
Yeah, we sort of, we're a little late, won't we?
We can put it in there. This weekend, next week, and then next week, and do it.
When is our stock show, February? The Timberlake's gonna be up here, too.
Do it this week, next week, and we're gonna do it. The ninth through the twentieth, and then have the election, if there is one.
I won't be able to get anything in this week's paper.
Oh, that's right. We can do it next week, next week, and then next week, and have the sixteenth through the twenty-seventh, and then have the election on the thirty-first, if we need one, and then that will be effective then by February first.
That sounds good to me.
And we can get to the fourth and the eleventh, I think.
Do what?
We can get to the fourth and the eleventh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we need to put that on, get to next week?
Yeah, got it on, I can go.
Okay. I'm not really worried about that.
On the fourth and eleventh, and have the election, or the final, the sixteenth through the twenty-seventh, and then the. Thirty-first.
One day of the week, so.
Tuesday. Good?
Yeah.
The election, if you don't.
Hopefully we don't need it, because we don't.
I hope we don't need it.
Thirty-first is on Wednesday.
Am I doing that the wrong year? Oh, I am.
This one's in on Friday.
So. Oh, come on.
That's happened before, that's.
We go.
He sent them for three hours.
Next week, so we go the fifteenth through the twenty-sixth, and then the election on, you still want to do it on Tuesdays, so on the thirtieth.
Whatever, this one's in on Friday.
Well, most of our elections are always on Tuesdays, so. Just make it a Tuesday, then.
That work for you guys?
Filing with White Day?
No, well.
I'm sorry, what? Filing will be White Days? Uh, the fifteenth through the twenty-sixth.
And normally, you don't usually have any elections to deal with.
Right.
Whoa, excuse me. Got that all taken care of, good. Any unforeseen business?
That'll be good. I'll second.
He went pretty fast on that, I think it's a hat.